Right, we are live. Thank you, everybody, for taking time to log into this virtual town hall this afternoon. It's so great to see some familiar faces from all over the Western Slope and the High Country and Central Colorado on the Zoom tonight. I'm Representative Dylan Roberts. I represent House District 26, which is Eagle County and Route County, and very excited to be joined by my Western Slope and Western Colorado colleagues for a virtual town hall on the first day or the part two of the first day of the 2021 legislative session. We started today, and we're officially getting started for the 2021 legislative session. And we are very excited to share a few moments with you, give you a little preview of what's ahead in the upcoming legislative session, and then take your questions. So just a reminder for everybody who's here tonight, if you would like to ask a question, use the Q and A function at the bottom of the screen or the chat box here on the right side. We're going to try to get to as many questions as possible, and we're going to go until about 5:30 this evening. So thank you all for joining us. I'm going to let each one of us talk for a little while about the bills that we're working on and some of our priorities and previews for the legislative session, and then, and then we'll get into questions. So Rep McCloskey, you're first on my screen, so please go ahead.
Great. Well, thank you, Representative Roberts. It is a true joy to be here with my Western Slope colleagues and even really exciting to see so much interest in this virtual town hall, thanks to the 51 attendees that we have logged in who are interested in learning more about what's happening down here in Denver. I represent House District 61, the five most beautiful counties in the state, Summit, Pittkin Lake, Gunnison, and Delta. And I am, I'm very excited to be returning as the Vice Chair of the Joint Budget Committee this year and the Vice Chair of Appropriations. We've been hard at work since the governor delivered his version of the budget back in November and meeting almost every day with the different departments in the state with a real keen eye on what we need to do in this moment during a pandemic to help everybody in Colorado build back stronger and better. And I'm excited to say that in addition to the legislation we'll be talking about tonight, Colorado is in a better place than we anticipated we would be, and our economy is continuing to come back and to start to, you know, bloom in a way that means more jobs for the working people of this state, and I think will get us back on a faster recovery than most of us had hoped just a year ago. So, great to be here. Thanks, everybody.
Barbara, Representative McLaughlin.
Hello, everyone. I'm Barbara McLaughlin. We're so, so happy to see all of you here tonight. This is such a great way to communicate with you and to have you ask us questions about what's going on up in the big, bad, big city up there that all of us try to avoid for the most part. So I think we all can say that we feel blessed to live on the Western Slope and with the people and the public lands that we have, and the issues that we face are so different from those in Denver. I represent House District 59, so I live in Durango, but I represent six counties in the southwest corner. And a couple of my passes are closed this weekend because of snow, so that's good because snow means water and water means health of our area. So I'm very excited. If you don't like forest fires, then you should really like snow. I think it'd be a good thing to have. So I look forward to talking with everybody tonight about what we're up to and how we're looking forward to getting Colorado back in business again and getting the schools open and making sure that everybody is healthy and safe in whatever we do and that we get our jobs back and we're back to being the rich Colorado that we have been before. So, welcome.
Thanks, Senator Donovan.
Well, thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight, and thank you, Rep Roberts, for being the lead on this one. I think the four of us have done more town halls together than many people have done town halls in total. So we really love being able to hear from you guys and hear kind of that unified voice of, of the Western Slope and Central Colorado and Upper Arkansas Valley, because I think many of us take our responsibility of representing our district, but also representing rural Colorado very seriously. So these town halls are a great chance for us to hear from you. I represent Senate District 5, which is seven counties that overlap with my three fabulous House colleagues, as well as a couple other members of the House. I am starting my seventh year over in the State Senate and was recently elected to be President pro tem of the Senate, which is quite a high honor that I will take very seriously, as well as being the Chair of the Agricultural, Agriculture Community. And Natural Resources also goes to that community, committee, pardon me. So looking forward to chairing that committee this session and bringing real attention to the issues that are facing ag and rural Colorado. This year also be focusing initially on broadband deployment, as well as lowering the cost of healthcare, and have some other really exciting bills in the works that I am, can't wait to share with you guys. As many of you know, we have already had a strange session, even though it's kind of day one. We did come back in January for three days to do some technical fixes, as well as swear in new members, and then we took a month off. And so now we are back to work. It's great to be back in the building and really get to, get to work on passing policy that will jumpstart the economic recovery, while also looking at long-term issues that we've been working on years and keeping the momentum going on those. So can't wait to hear from all of you guys. Make sure that you keep those questions going in the chat and in the Q and A. I will say this, if there are any questions in regards to any congressional races, I'll ask that we push those into a different forum, which I will put in the chat, because this is really focused on the districts that all four of us currently represent.
Thanks, Senator Donovan. So, and I'll, I'll go last. As I said, I'm Dylan Roberts. I have the privilege of representing House District 26, which is all of Eagle County and Route County, and I see many friendly faces from both of those counties here tonight. Thank you for joining us. I am really looking forward to this session as well. We have a lot of important work to do. I am humbled to be the Chair of the House Business Affairs and Labor Committee, and I also serve on the House Agriculture, Livestock and Water Committee, as well as the House Judiciary Committee. And we have a lot of important work to do this session. I think, you know, COVID-19 is going to be the overarching theme of everything that we do down here at the Capitol and making sure that Colorado recovers and has all of the resources that it needs moving forward, so that we can build our economy back, so that we can help working families, help those who have been affected both economically and health-wise from this pandemic, and, you know, really get focused on that recovery. But we also have a lot of ideas and legislation that comes from our communities that we were working on before the pandemic that we want to pick up on as we go forward this year. So I see this session as kind of those, those dual things where we'll be focusing very strongly on COVID recovery, but also making sure that your concerns, your ideas, your priorities that existed both before and after this pandemic are also being addressed. So I'll get started. I want to give a little preview of some of the bills that I'll be introducing, and then we'll have each of the legislators do the same, and also talk a little bit about some of the bigger topics that are going to be at the legislature this year as well, whether they're bills individually sponsored by us or some of our other colleagues. So my biggest priority is, of course, COVID recovery. I think we're going to be seeing a large stimulus package, which I'm sure Representative McCloskey will be able to talk about from her position on the Joint Budget Committee, but every legislator is going to be involved in this. We have some financial resources available that we want to use to directly stimulate the economy, keep helping our small businesses like we have been over the last year at the state level through grants and loan funding, to help deploy broadband for remote learning, to help with childcare and housing issues that have been exacerbated by the pandemic, and a lot more that will directly create jobs, help people get back on their feet, and help our businesses recover. So that stimulus package is going to be a big focus in the first couple of weeks, I imagine, and we can talk more about that tonight. For me personally, I'm going to continue my work. That is the, the number one thing that I think all four of us here, because we, we represent Western Colorado, is the cost of healthcare. And for too many people in our communities, it is unaffordable and unattainable, because it's too expensive and because you have so little, so few choices on the, especially on the individual market. And so Senator Donovan and I are continuing our, gosh, what is it, three-year-long progress on this to finally create a Colorado health insurance option in the state of Colorado, and at the very least, lower health insurance premiums for everybody in the individual market and give you a new choice. So we are going to be bringing that bill back. We introduced a bill last year to create a Colorado option that passed its first committee hearing right before we had to shut down the legislature. We went back to the drawing board, and we've had some really good conversations and new ideas come into play, and we think we've arrived at a really creative and innovative solution that will immediately lower health insurance costs and then put us on the track to creating a Colorado health insurance option if we need it once we're building out of this pandemic. So that's going to be by far my, my biggest bill and my priority for this session. It's something I've been hearing about from people like yourselves since I've been a legislator three years ago, and it's something we need to get done this year. A couple of bills that I introduced today. One is to allow restaurants to continue the sale of cocktails and alcohol drinks with their to-go and delivery orders. You know, it's not the biggest bill in the world, but it, that extra source of revenue has been a lifesaver for our restaurants during this pandemic, particularly in our smaller communities, where they don't do a lot of takeout in the first place. But this extra revenue is crucial, and so we are going to extend this bill that I introduced today. It's a bipartisan bill. If it gets passed, it will allow restaurants to continue that practice for years to come and have that extra source of revenue. I'm also working on some really important criminal justice reform bills that are going to protect victims of crime in our communities, and so I'm excited about those. Also working on a bill to lower prescription drug costs, which is, continues to be vital and something that I hear about all the time. So those are a few things that I am working on, as well as a few bills related to water conservation and promotion of agriculture, especially on the Western Slope. So I don't want to hog all the time, though, so that's what I'm working on, and I'll go back to, we'll go in the same order, Representative McCloskey, if you want to talk about some of your great bills.
Thank you, Rep Roberts. I'm excited to see all the good stuff that you're doing, and particularly the Colorado option. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you, Senator Donovan, for what you've done there. I want to talk first about the supplemental package that is coming forward from the Joint Budget Committee. Every year in January, the JBC comes together and tries to true up the budget. Where have we made expenditures in areas we weren't anticipating? So let's take a little out of the piggy bank to cover those expenses, and where did we save some money? And we can put money back in the piggy bank. I'm particularly proud of the fact that because of what we experienced on the Western Slope with wildfires, not only this last summer, but in years past, the state is making some very significant investments right now as part of our supplemental efforts. I'll be carrying a bill to invest millions in wildfire mitigation and watershed restoration efforts in immediate response to the wildfires from the 2020 summer. And I will also be carrying a bill that will be an investment in a Firehawk helicopter. We've had leaders in our Department of Public Safety tell us that this particular piece of flying machinery can be a real game changer in early detection of wildfires and being able to suppress those early, so they don't become the monsters that we've seen here in Colorado. I'm also proud to be working on an investment in our state parks. We know what gem we have, not only here on the Western Slope, but across the state and our state parks. And our state parks took a lot of use and abuse this year with the pandemic, so we are investing $20 million right now, a chance for us to create some, some jobs and some work in our communities and strengthen the infrastructure needs of our state parks across the state. We are also putting $30 million towards some Main Street projects that will cover rural as well as urban parts of our state, and this is really to improve accessibility, given some of the challenges that the pandemic has brought to our Main Street access, particularly for restaurants or for other small businesses. So we're excited to see those investments going out quickly in the hopes of really stimulating job growth as well as economic recovery. I will be carrying a couple of bills that are near and dear to my heart, and particularly in my district. Both, the first two are about behavioral and mental health support and response. The first one will help expand what we currently call a co-responder program with law enforcement in this state. You know, so often, when a call comes into 911, the need isn't about criminal activity. Sometimes it's just a person in crisis, a person in trouble. And we know that law enforcement is not always, doesn't always have the right skills or the ability to respond in exactly the right way. So a co-responder program allows for law enforcement to partner with behavioral or mental health therapists, and really to deliver the kind of support and services someone might need in crisis instead of a typical law enforcement response. So I'm excited to see those programs supported and expanded across the state. And I'm also carrying a secure transportation bill that will make sure those of us in rural Colorado can get someone who is in a mental health crisis to the help they need, whether that be a hospital or a special facility, without having to be transported in a, in the back of a cop car with handcuffs on. So excited about those efforts. The last one I want to mention, because it's so important to all of us on the I-70 corridor, is a bill that came from some folks in the Summit County area around carpooling apps. And the idea that we should be fostering more carpooling from the front range to our ski resorts in the winter and to our summer resorts in the summer. We have to do a little bit of work in statute, so these carpooling apps can get off the ground. We had been talking about this last year before COVID hit, and I'm really excited to bring this effort back, because I hope it drives a lot more people, maybe post-pandemic, into carpools, so that we can alleviate some of the traffic we see on I-70. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rep McLaughlin.
Thank you, Rep McCloskey. I am, I'm a former teacher, and I am also Chair of the House Education Committee, so I feel very blessed that I get to use a profession that I absolutely loved and help the people that I, I used to work with for so long. We are looking at a lot of ways to get our schools back open safely, of course, but also to take care of some of the learning loss that our students have gone through. We have some bills that are specifically focused on tutoring this summer and summer school and how we can get kids back on track. One bill that I'm running is to delay testing, the CMAS testing, which is pretty big, high-stakes testing that they do for students every year. And we're doing this because I don't believe that the kids are ready for this. They're finally getting back into school, and then we have to stop everything and do several weeks of testing and have them sit down, shut up, and show us what you haven't learned. And I think there's a better way to do it. I think that, first of all, I believe the teachers know what the kids have learned. I believe the teachers are very aware of, you know, where their kids are, where, where the students are lacking, what help they need, and they've been giving tests, they've been giving some standardized tests throughout the year. So I would like to have the data come from something other than the CMAS tests that are usually done out there. So we can gather the data, but it doesn't have to be that way. Second of all, the second, the, the CMAS data doesn't come out until August, and so we would go the whole summer without knowing where our students have fallen behind, and we need the data immediately, so that during the summer, we can help catch them up. I think most kids are pretty excited about not taking the test, but getting caught up in the summer. And so I'm, I'm really working with students and for students on this one, because I think they've had a lot of mental health issues, you know, during this whole pandemic, not knowing how they're learning, what they're learning, not having a computer or internet. There's a lot of stresses on them, and I don't think we should add any more to their plate. So that's one big bill that I'm running. I'm also trying to help teachers out a little bit, and we're going to delay, we're running a bill, not, we're going to, but we are running a bill to delay the, the deadline when teachers have to take the Read Act training. Read Act is a, is a great act that we have in Colorado, and it's to train teachers how, in a scientific way, how to teach reading, so that we make sure that every student is, is learning the real basic skills for reading and that they, you know, they continue their education with really strong reading skills. And so part of the original Read Act was to train all the teachers, but they seem to be a little stressed out right now. So this just delays it. If they want to take the, the courses right now, they certainly can, but if they can't and they just need a little bit of a break, this bill will give them that little bit of a break. So eventually, they will all be trained, but not necessarily by the due date. So we're going to give them a year extra on this bill. A really great bill that I like is about media literacy. And two years ago, we did a bill that examined what media literacy is, and we had a group of professionals get together, and they have established all kinds of resources for teachers to use. So this bill simply says, next time standards are coming up for different schools and different subject matter, we insert media literacy into the standards. So it will not be that they have to stop everything and, and learn media literacy, but if they're doing a history research project, they should know that, you know, what's fact, what's not. Not everything on the internet, believe it or not, is true, and sometimes people on Facebook lie, I don't know. So we just want to teach our students how to do some critical thinking when they're looking at all this media that's available. There's so much more. You know, I used to go to the encyclopedia, and I was pretty trustworthy, and they don't do that anymore. So we're trying to teach students how to look critically at media literacy. So we have a few bills that are coming up for education, and I have some other bills, but those are probably my favorites that I'm doing, that are really addressing needs of students and educators in our system. Senator Donovan.
Thanks for that pass off, man. It is, I'm so inspired by you guys. It's so great hearing what you, what we're going to be working on this session and some of the bills that I get to hopefully carry for you guys in the Senate. Great stuff. So, so far this session, I'm probably still most excited about working on the Colorado Public Option, our Colorado Option Bill. We have still seen so many people that don't have the safety net of just basic insurance in their life, and this bill will push providers to do the right thing, make their plans more affordable for individuals, or eventually, they could have the option of purchasing an affordable state-sponsored plan. So I will let Rep Roberts, Rep Roberts go into more detail on that bill, because it's starting in the House. So really, we'll let him expound more on it. The first big bill that I'm putting out this session is around broadband, something that I have found myself working on for the past six years, that I never anticipated working on broadband. And all of a sudden, you know, here we are, just casually writing, you know, 20 pages of a broadband bill. But it is, I think probably everyone on this call is very familiar with the challenges facing a broadband and connectivity out in the more dispersed parts of Colorado. But we have not always been successful in being able to illuminate what it means to not have robust and redundant broadband to the rest of our colleagues. Then comes COVID, where all of a sudden, our reliance on broadband across every living room in the state was exacerbated and illuminated. And so now I feel like we really have a renewed commitment and focus to making sure that broadband is something that everyone has access to, because in this pandemic, we ask people to live through this medium, right? Everything went to having to have a connection, and so if you couldn't get that connection because the wire wasn't in the ground of your community, or you couldn't get that connection because you couldn't afford it, or you couldn't get that connection because you have one line in your town and that line got cut by someone installing electric, like it just really, the stories were once again elevated to the forefront of students parking in McDonald's parking lots to access their course credit, of moms driving a minivan full of kids across a county to a place where they could get better service, that those kids could meet with their teachers while sitting in the minivan. Our unemployment benefits were all available online. Our information about COVID was all available online, signing up for a vaccine online. So it's just has become more and more critical that broadband is not a want, but it is absolutely a need. So I will be carrying that bill with Rep Roberts in the House. Stay tuned. These broadband bills tend to have a lot of work done to them, which is exactly the process that is supposed to happen in the building. So really excited for, for that one. We're going to do some big stuff on broadband this year and hopefully get some really big dollars into the broadband deployment board, bigger than anything we've even come close to touching. So that will be a huge move that all of us will really be advocating for, and it will take all of us to get that done. Two other bills that are out there that I am really excited about, hopefully passing into law, is one that will create a Veterans Mobile Support Unit. This will be a grant program that will go out to a group who hopefully is veteran-owned and is familiar with helping veterans who are experiencing homelessness, and this will create a mobile unit that can travel to the more less urban areas of the state to reach into those, those veterans who are experiencing homelessness and help them connect with different services, and hopefully, in the long term, get them into a more stable living environment and then connect them with business and work opportunities. So such a problem that we're seeing, that I really want an out-of-the-box idea to see if we can make some impacts with that grant program. And then also working on a bill to help some of our incarcerated individuals who currently work on wildland fire programs to make sure that they have a pathway to full-time employment once they have served out their sentence. And so that program is called SWIFT. It's an existing program within our Corrections Department, but this bill is really going to focus on making sure that those incarcerated individuals that participate in SWIFT are set up for success post-incarceration, because we haven't quite seen these really valuable skills that they pick up, being able to translate into employment once they, they serve their sentence. So Rep Roberts is also working on that one for me in the House. And of course, I think that bill is important on so many levels. We really need to address recidivism. In Colorado, we have a higher-than-average recidivism rate. Also, with how many wildfires we are seeing, we need a lot of talented men and women out there, ready to help our communities fight these fires when they arrive on our doorstep. And of course, we want to see these programs that we invest in as a state while they're incarcerated have a payback in the society once those folks are out of the system. So that's going to be a great bill as well. So those are the first three bills of many that we're going to work on. I think also the four lawmakers that you have in front of us are both also committed to working for our men and women of our search and rescue volunteer teams across the state. So that will be a bill that is forthcoming, that we will all four be involved in, in some capacity, depending on how it ends up being drafted and reintroduced into the world of the General Assembly. But those tragedies that we had last week was the deadliest week in recorded history for winter outdoor activities. So to put that more simply, we lost more people to avalanches last week, in a single week, than we have ever before. And so a lot of that incredibly complicated and emotionally draining work falls on the shoulders of our search and rescue volunteers, who of course, will never once complain publicly about the work that they do and are proud to do it. But I think it really is time for the state to make sure we're stepping up, and as we increase our recreation outdoors, we're stepping up to meet those folks, with folks where, where they are. So Dylan, Representative Roberts, are you going to be our emcee of questioning? Are we just going to jump, jump in and out? I can keep talking about broadband if you want me to answer that question.
Yeah. Yeah, let's, let's dive into questions. Thank you all for, for sharing those, your, the bills that you're working on, some very exciting stuff. But I know people have some questions about those topics and other topics, so let's just dive in. And just a reminder for anybody who's on the Zoom. the Zoom, you can use the Q and A function at the bottom of your screen to ask a question. So we're going to try to go chronologically if we can. So Jeff, thanks for the question about transportation. I'll take that one. We, today was the the restart of the session and that means at least in the House, the Speaker of the House gives an opening day speech. And transportation was one of the big pillars that Speaker Garnett mentioned. And I do believe that it seems, or it does seem that we have some momentum this year to finally reach a deal on a permanent source of funding for transportation. Obviously, the bill still needs to be introduced and passed through both chambers, but this is something that Colorado has desperately needed for many years. And I think there is bipartisan support to get something done. How we arrive at that solution is up for debate. What I know about the current proposal, and it hasn't been released publicly yet, but it would increase the gas tax essentially and something that Colorado has not done in decades, while many other states, both red and blue, have done. It would also add a fee to some of the transportation services that use our roads most frequently, things like delivery trucks and Amazon and Uber and Lyft and add a vehicle miles traveled fee to those, because those are, those types of vehicles are using our roads a lot more, but not accounting for the infrastructure needs that we have across the state. The Speaker also mentioned that this funding, should we achieve the the passage of the bill, would go to multimodal transportation solutions as well as our rural roads. And I was very happy to hear Speaker Garnett call out rural roads in his speech today, because that's something that's important to all of us, obviously. We don't want that funding just to be concentrated on the front range. It needs to come west and it needs to move off of I-70 as well and into our our more rural communities. So it does, it, this is my fourth session, Jeff, and I do feel like this is the most momentum I've ever felt for a transportation deal during, in my first four sessions. So that is promising. So let's go to, there was a question about the cost of living adjustment, and I know Rep. McCluskey is ready to talk about that.
Thank you. There's a lot of great questions here. I hope we can get to all of them. We have one question about the 2.5% increase that the Joint Budget Committee has passed as a kind of a foundational common policy in setting the state budget this year. We, the proposal from the governor have been 2.05% increase for our state employees. But that would not have even kept our state employees whole because we anticipate an increase in para-retirement funding this year. And with the cost of inflation, 2.5% at least helps to keep our state employees even. You know, we have more than 60,000 state employees, people working in our communities in the Western Slope, down here in Denver, and you know, some of the key essential workers who have been helping our state continue to offer great services during this challenging time. I was very proud to vote in support of that 2.5% increase. But you're absolutely right. The person that posted this question acknowledges that as a state, we've been falling further and further behind. And in some cases, we are higher than 16% behind competitive market rates when it comes to wages for our state employees. And that's tough. It should not be like that. Our employees should be earning a living wage so that they can pay for housing, food and and, you know, life's basic necessities. So I'm hopeful we can hold on to the 2.5% and certainly with the legislation we passed last year, our state employees represented by Colorado wins will have the opportunity to negotiate for a compensation and benefits package in future years. I believe that those negotiations will will start here next October. And really proud that our employees will have a voice in in what that compensation package looks like going forward.
Senator Donovan, I see there's a question about broadband and wireless, if you want to take that one.
Sure. Happily, um. So it's on, it's on two separate bills, both of both of which are still current law. But I think we can talk about certainly those what are called 152 elections is a conversation that kind of ebbs and flows depending on what catches traction with our municipalities. 152, that was the bill number back when it was passed in 2005, I believe. But but that was stating that if a municipality or or local government wanted to do their own broadband network, they needed to have an election around that. The intent of that was to make sure that at that time, we didn't get a patchwork of of networks and technologies, which actually was a concern and in 2005. It is much less of a concern now. So you've seen the temperature around 152 be brought down significantly. And I would not say that it is a common call to action as much as it used to be. There are also much different opinions now on what a 152, where that trigger happens. So I would encourage your municipality to go through and make sure that they are getting really good advice on that piece, because you can take many, many steps of looking into if you wanted to do your own broadband network before actually having to trigger that election. There could be an effort to repeal it in the future. I haven't heard of that happening this session. We did try to do that. I carried that bill a couple of years ago and it didn't make it through the House, you house guys. But alas, I should just say it didn't gain enough votes to become law. The other one, I think, around 5G technologies is going to be an evolving conversation that I think all of us would continue to like to hear different thoughts and opinions. 5G technology looks very different in rural areas than in urban areas. It is a small cell technology, so you have to have a lot of little towers all over the place for it to work. It might be something that makes a lot more sense for an urban area than something that makes sense for a more linear or spread out rural areas. So more to come on 5G. But I think ultimately to wire all of Colorado, we are going to need a D all of the above strategy. As satellite gets better, as 5G evolves, as we figure out how to put more data into every little piece of light and a fiber optic. When we look at what infrastructure CDOT might have, all of these things will come together for eventual goal of making sure that every corner and parts of our community are wired and have access to broadband.
Thanks, Senator. Moving right along, there's a question from anonymous attendee. I don't know who exactly this is. I I might know who it is. This is a question about local meat processing and making sure that our ranchers can get their cattle processed. There was significant delays exacerbated by the pandemic. The, a bill was introduced today that we're still looking at to remove some of the red tape and barriers around meat processing so that local ranchers can process their meat locally and sell it locally. I'll find that bill and put it in the chat, but it's a concept I'm supportive of. I've talked to the town of Hayden about this. It's something I heard about many months ago and, you know, I want to get something done. I also know that the Department of Agriculture here in Colorado is working on maybe some rule changes that they can speed up that, speed up that process without passing the law. So we are aware of that issue and we're working on it. Thanks for the question. Representative McGlocken, there's a question about the rural urban divide, if you want to take that one.
Yeah, I mean, oftentimes we say that our big fights aren't necessarily between Democrats and Republicans. They're between rural and urban. A lot of it is because there's just a lot more of them than us. But if we do not work with Republicans who are rural, we're not going to get anything done. We're trying to be really strong voices for rural Colorado. And so I would say all of us, we probably have more bipartisan bills between the four of us than most legislators do because we need to, we need to work with everybody. And it's kind of silly to think that you can just do Democrats on a bill that are addressing all of rural Colorado. So I think we could all four say that we work really well with the Republican, especially the rural Republicans. And we have to be a little bit louder in Denver to to let them know that we have issues that are different than their, our schools are a lot smaller for the most part, harder to get to. Our districts are enormous. We have one representative who, you know, it's like a nine block area that has as much people as six counties that I represent. And, you know, he complains about getting stuck in traffic and it took him almost 45 minutes to get from one end to the other. And it's like, oh, boy. That's, you know, it's a four hour trip for me. So we have to kind of introduce them to rural Colorado. My first year in office, I had several that came down to visit me in Durango and took them out and showed them what it was like out here and how we have a really strong agricultural economy, how the water is so important to us down here. We don't just turn on a tap and take it for granted. And it's, it means a lot to us, especially when people on the eastern slope start wanting to borrow ours and never pay back what they borrowed. But also, you know, our jobs are harder. We do not have, luckily, I guess, real big cities for job opportunities. So we have to be creative and and do our own rural economic recovery down here. We depend a lot on tourism, on outdoor rec, which I particularly fond of, I think. So and our public lands, they come to visit us in our rural Colorado. And sometimes they just don't know that people live there. It's not just a vacation home. So we have to do a lot of talking and discussing and, but most of all, I think we address those concerns by working across the aisle and running bills that are not political, but they're, they're really helpful for rural Colorado.
Thank you, Representative. There's several questions from Jeff and Catherine about affordable housing and Rep. McCluskey, I'll give that one to you.
Great. Thank you, Rep. Roberts. You know, housing is diverse and it's not just a front range resort or rural issue. I mean, it's all of Colorado. We are facing, we were facing a significant housing shortage before COVID hit. And people have certainly been challenged to stay in their homes during this difficult time. So a couple of things that I would mention. We supported Proposition EE, which was passed by the voters this past fall, and that's bringing additional funding to affordable housing projects. I know Rep. Roberts carried a terrific bill to do just that, his first or second year in office. I was there to vote for it, loved that. And we know that, you know, funneling money towards projects is important. But we also have to find new ways to approach our housing challenges. We've made investments in the Legal Eviction Defense Fund so that people facing eviction can get support to to stay in their homes and work through the process in a way that is holistic and helpful and supportive. As we, you know, work with the Fed funding that is coming our direction and look at additional funding from the state for support during this economic crisis, we continue to talk about eviction moratoriums and protecting not only tenants, but also landlords, because we know if tenants are unable to pay their their monthly rent payments and or for those who own their monthly mortgages, that means that the entire system starts to collapse and we want to protect that. I am excited by some of the new ideas that are coming forward that may be included as part of our economic stimulus this spring. Ways that we can incentivize more workforce development, workforce housing developments by, you know, encouraging municipalities with funding to deal with, you know, building permit fees and parking requirements and density and designs, density issues as well as design standards. You know, looking at different ways we can expedite the permitting process so that we can get projects off the ground quicker. Talk about density bonuses for developers that ensure at least 20% of units are affordable to households that are say, earning a certain percentage of AMI. I think there's some really creative ideas coming forth and you know, I've said it before, I think we're seeing this in housing, but we're seeing it in healthcare and education as well. The pandemic has really forced us to change. It's forced us to look at things differently. And I think as we start to come out of the crisis and our economy begins to recover, we're going to, you know, take some of these new and innovative approaches and really put them to work to see what we can do to make a difference in the long term for Colorado. As our speaker said today in his opening speech, build back better, right? So we can, we can take these lessons learned and do things really more creatively and and better for the needs that we're all facing.
I'd like to add just a little thing on to to Representative McCluskey's statement there. I think this pandemic has shown so many weaknesses in our infrastructure in Colorado. And I think that all of us are working together to make sure we address those and not just cover them up and pretend like they didn't happen. So it's broadband, it's housing, it's food, security, it's water, it's, it's just everything that came out. I think we're taking advantage of it and I think we're really addressing those very major elements of despair, I think, in Colorado. So maybe we can thank the pandemic for something good. And I think that might be it, is that we are addressing needs that have been needed to be addressed for a long time.
Absolutely. I see a couple of questions from former State Representative Roger Wilson and his wife, Chris. Thanks for joining us. And, you know, I want to answer your question about unemployment. We can talk about vaccines distribution as well. I think we're ready to support CDPHD and our local public health agencies with vaccine deployment. And I know the JVC considers requests from them all the time. So I'm hoping we can get them more infrastructure funding as well. But I want to address the unemployment issue. As the Chair of the House Business Affairs and Labor Committee, we have jurisdiction over the Department of Labor and Employment. And so I've been talking with that department for a long time, many weeks and months. And I am fully empathetic and I feel terribly about the problems people have had with their unemployment claims. We need to do better. And I'm hopeful that with the investment we just gave to the Department of Labor and Employment and will be giving in the coming weeks, that they are going to be able to update their infrastructure and their software so that they can better handle these claims. Unemployment insurance is so crucial right now. We need the federal government to step up and send more funding, but we need to have the infrastructure in place here in Colorado to distribute it. So I will say, if you are having issues with your unemployment, please contact your local legislator. We can to help elevate your claim and make sure that you are getting your problems sorted out. The phase two of unemployment is going to be rolled out next week. So that is for people who have had their their benefits stopped. Phase two starts up next week and you should start seeing benefits come back online starting next week. So please be in touch. We're very sorry about all these problems, but we are doing our best to make sure that we can get our system up to date. Certainly, nobody could have prepared for the onslaught of unemployment claims that were going to come when COVID hit, but we need to be prepared for the next time. So Senator Donovan, there's a question about Proposition 114 and anything the legislature might be doing this year to respond to that, the passage of Proposition 114.
Yeah, 114 was the bill that passed this last fall about the reestablishment of wolves on the western slope of Colorado. Lots of concerns about the bill from our communities and quite a bit of support as well. But I think in terms of legislation this year, I've heard rumors of of a couple of different bills that are out there. I haven't seen anything specific, so I'm going to hesitate being able to weigh in on any bill that I haven't been able to read yet. I'm bringing 50 bills home with me tonight to read. And that'll be a good start. But but in terms of the wolf reestablishment, a couple of things that I think is important to keep in mind. One, we do know that we are having wolves migrate into the state. So regardless of how we get paws on the ground in Colorado, we do have wolves in the state now. Will likely have wolves in the state well into the future. And so at the Parks and Wildlife Department is going to go under a comprehensive process of how to manage wolves in our state. Management is is a large task for them. It includes how do you monitor these animals? It includes how do we set up a system to reimburse for livestock loss? It also includes, in this case, what could be a federally listed species or not, depending on what happens in the next weeks and months with litigation and with the current administration of what that means. All of these issues do become even increasingly complicated because of the way that monies are allocated to Colorado Parks and Wildlife. And that we have rules that those dollars that go to Colorado Parks and Wildlife need to go to support need to go to support, I use that in a broad term, but to support species that are able to be hunted, right? Because that's where the money for Parks and Wildlife comes from, hunting and fishing licenses largely. So we need to do quite a bit of work around wolf re-establishment, reintroduction, however you want to phrase that, and make sure that we are doing it well for both sides. Because of course proponents that are excited about the idea of having wolves back on the ground in Colorado, we need to do it in a way that supports that animal's reintroduction and that it's done thoughtful and well-invested. And then for people that have concerns about wolves being back on the ground, we need to make sure that we have a compensation program that is well-funded and doesn't dip into the fees that have been paid by the hook and bullet club. So stay tuned. I'm so glad that so many of you guys are paying attention to this issue. I think we also need to give the very hard-working, well-informed people of the Parks and Wildlife team a chance to present their ideas, give us a proposal, and then react to that. Because if we get too far in front of them by passing law before those folks that we all know and love because they're in our backyards and they're the people that we see when we go hiking at Trailheads, I think we really need to give those folks a chance to give us a proposal and then react to that. But stay tuned. This is a really important issue for the western slope.
Thank you. Trying to get through all these questions and we have about six minutes left. So Christina, your question about a bill related to water that I'm doing. I don't have any solid bills quite yet to be introduced on that topic. The big thing I'm watching is we passed a bill last year to create a study committee to study water speculation in our state, which could be a really pernicious thing that if it starts happening on a broad scale, where out-of-state interests are coming in and making money off of our water resources, which is not good at any time, but certainly not good in a time of drought. So we have a committee out there studying how our laws could be strengthened and they're going to make recommendations back to the legislature. So those could be issues that we take up either later this year or next year.
Rep. Roberts, the other piece that's really interesting right now with water is the demand management program that people should engage in. If water is your issue, make sure you are watching the demand management debate that is happening now and will be formulated. Demand management is a two-word phrase that is trying to encompass an immensely complicated process of figuring out that if there is ever a call on the Colorado River, which we're the headwaters of, but that water goes everywhere. If there's a call on the Colorado River, how we can fulfill that legal obligation of sending water across our state line without it having an undue burden on the communities and, and in large part into agriculture on the western slope. What can happen with demand management is if we're not careful about it, we'll create a market of water rights. So you put demand management and water speculation together. And if we don't get those two things right in the next couple of years, we could see a lot of out-of-state interests buying up water rights with the intent to sell them under a demand management system when water becomes tight going across our border. So watch for those, but also know that you have the four of us on top of that as well, as well as our Republican colleagues. We are all very tightly aligned on this topic. I'd say one of the most closely aligned things of when party just absolutely disappears is when we talk about water on the western slope, but also in other basins. We're seeing it happen in the San Luis basin. And we're seeing it on the eastern plains at the end of the Arkansas with drilling. So this issue is kind of, equalizes rural lawmakers to almost all be on the same page.
Thank you for that. There are two questions that I know are from good friends in Rountt County, Commissioner Monger and Linda, about a bill that's been talked about from one of our colleagues, not from any of us, about county commissioners serving on their local county boards of health. I will tell my constituents in Rountt County who asked this question that I'm monitoring that bill very closely, talking to the bill sponsors. I've heard loud and clear from my community, Commissioner Corrigan, Commissioner Melton, that that is probably not a good idea for our community. And I'm going to listen to you as you're the ones who have been serving on that board. We'll see where the bill sponsors go with that. I don't know if it got introduced today or not. It's probably coming a little later. But I do value our commissioners' work on their boards of health in our smaller communities. So thank you for voicing your opinion. I'll continue to be in touch with you about that. Rep. McCluskey, I think you have some thoughts on that one, too.
Thank you, Rep. Roberts. I just wanted to add that all five of my counties have voiced great concern with this bill. I think the, the idea or the spirit behind it that Representative Kip wants to address is the, how highly politicized some of the challenges have been in communities around public health orders. And I appreciate that concern. And certainly, I believe that all of our public health decisions should be made on good science and good data. We should be listening to the experts, not only when we issue the public health orders, but in how we craft and design our policy. So I believe the spirit is good, but I, I am very concerned about the execution. I do believe that our friends at CCAT, some of our counties that work together outside of CCI have been talking about some different approaches that could be considered in this bill that might help address the hopes to de-politicize what happens in public health in a way that is more in partnership with our county commissioners and our leadership, which I certainly value and want to make sure that, you know, any of our county commissioners that are here with us, whether it's Rountt County or elsewhere, that you all know how, how much we value your incredible efforts this past year, how you have been the front line of public health decisions and enforcement, and how very difficult that has been. And I am certainly very grateful to all of you for your leadership during this time and your ability to keep businesses afloat as well as taking care of, of public health and safety. So thank you so much. And I really thank you, Rep. Roberts. I think, you know, monitoring is the right description for me now as well, with hopes that the bill will move in the right direction.
So we are right at 5:30. I know there's a few questions we did not get answered. Some of them may have been partially answered, but apologies if we didn't get to you. I know all of us will type our email and phone number in the chat right now so you can follow up with us. But I want to give everybody a quick moment to wrap up as we close out this exciting first day of our 2021 session. So Representative McLaughlin, would you like to go first?
Yeah, we were listening to the speeches today of the leaders of both the Republican and Democratic Party in, in the House. And both of them had very positive outlooks, you know, work together, let's solve some problems. That's what we're really here for, is to solve problems. And I think if we all get on the same boat together and go in the same direction, I think we can do that. Like I said before, we've had a lot of problems that have been exposed to us. And I think it's our duty and our obligation to address those problems and, and make sure that Colorado stays strong and that we come out of this better than when we went in. So I look forward to working with everybody and doing just exactly that.
Senator Donovan.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really anxious to get back to work in the Capitol and try to start this process of recovery. It's going to be a long road, but I'm really hopeful and I anticipate that the leadership down at the Capitol, those that choose to be a Coloradan and not choose to be a Democrat or Republican, will really be able to come together and find ways to make sure that we are jump-starting this recovery and making sure that we kick it off quickly instead of it starting off slowly and kind of, you know, recovering incremental. I think we're going to rely on you guys, too, and tap into the resilient spirit that is Colorado to take care of each other, to look for those opportunities to make things even better and to keep telling us where, what we can do to help you. This is the best job I've ever had. I love coming to the Capitol every day. It's the hardest job I've ever had. And that comes from someone who's tried to keep a calf alive in freezing cold temperature. But that's just a whole different level of hardness than it takes to get into this building every day and make sure that, that we get stuff done. I'll, I'll end with this. I got a comment that said, I wish you wouldn't say fight so much. I wish you wouldn't say you're fighting for us. I respect the sentiment, but I will let you know, it is a fight down in this building every day to try to get the things done for the people that we represent. And I will keep fighting for you because if they, if you don't come into this building ready to speak up, ready to take on the harder conversations, then things just don't get done for the communities you represent. So you have a heck of a team here. And we always will be available and ready and willing to hear from you guys, the good and the bad. So keep in touch.
Thanks. Representative McCluskey.
Thank you again, Rep. Roberts. Yeah, I just, I'll close with a simple thank you. I, like Senator Donovan, best job I've ever had, certainly the most challenging. And I know when I ran for office, my first time out of the gate, if someone had told me we'd be facing a pandemic and an economic crisis unlike anything the state or nation had ever seen in its history, I might have run away from this opportunity. But what I've learned this past year is that I live with some of the best people I've ever met. My neighbors, those in my community who have rallied to support one another, to take care of each other during this incredible time, has given me more inspiration and hope than almost anything I've done in my life. So to all of you who are, you know, stepping up to help in some way in your community during this pandemic, thank you. You're the ones who are really making a difference. And I just hope I can follow your lead and continue to serve the public from this seat in a way that makes a difference for Colorado. So thanks, everyone. Please stay in touch.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. Thanks to my colleagues for, for joining us. I think it's been fun to emcee. I think we will trade around the emcee baton as we go on through session and keep doing these. But it's, it's really an honor to serve with, with these three talented lawmakers who share my love for the western slope and for western Colorado and, and for our great state. I know it's a really tough time for a lot of people right now, especially in our rural mountain communities. We are hit, we got the brunt of the pandemic first and we felt a lot of the economic pain more than a lot, some other communities in Colorado. But the beauty of the state legislature I've found over the last few years serving here is that we can get things done that improve people's lives. And we do it in a quick, expeditious and specific way. It may not make the newspaper headlines. You may not see it on your TV at night. But we are here to help and take your ideas and put them into action. You know, I hear about all the bills we're sponsoring this year. I think every single one of those comes from an idea we've heard directly from a constituent or many constituents. And so that's what's the beauty of the state legislature to me. And we have a lot of work ahead of us. This is probably the most unique and challenging legislative session in, in recent memory. And I want to continue working for all of you and taking your ideas down here to the Capitol. So continue to be in touch, monitor the work we're doing. Let us know if we can help or answer questions. We'll continue to do these town halls. But thank you all for your engagement and your interest, and we look forward to talking to you soon. Have a great evening, everybody.